We'll go ahead and call the Bryan County Board of Commissioners December thirteenth meeting to order, please. If we'll stand and we'll do an invocation and pledge.
Join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for all the many blessings. Be with each and every one of us in our community during this time holiday season. Enjoy their families and bring them back home safe. And we want to say a special prayer for our military and that are overseas and aren't here to enjoy their families, Lord. Just be with them in this time and be with us tonight in this meeting that we do the right thing for our citizens of Bryan County and the right thing in your eyes. In Jesus's name, amen.
If you join me for the prayer, I mean, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank everybody for coming here. Sam, good to see you. Thank everybody for coming. Right now, we need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda with one amendment being that we add item number 11 under county administrator for the adoption of a memorandum of understanding with Project KSG.
I'll second that. Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed. Okay, that motion carries. All right, we need the approval for our November 2022 meeting minutes.
Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve the November 2022 minutes.
Second. Second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Okay, all opposed. Okay, that motion carries. All right, we need the approval of our consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second. Second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we have a quick presentation that we're gonna do. Andrew, if you come down, we'll recognize you for your service to the community.
We'd like to recognize Andrew. Andrew was appointed. We had Brad Richer left his position and we appointed Andrew. We just want to say, Andrew, thank you for serving for us. You did a great job. It's hard to kind of transition in for a little bit of time you were here. We just want to say thank you and we appreciate your service to our county. We have one more presentation we'd like to recognize. Dr. Gene Wallace, if you could step down here, please, sir. You're not in trouble.
I'm not gonna get called to the principal's office.
Well, you know what? That time you said, well, it comes back out. We just wanted to recognize Dr. Gene. He finished his training and it takes about a year and a half to leave a train to ACCG. He's completed all the requirements to become a certified commissioner. Again, it is a commitment to be a commissioner. And you know, we're lucky, we're privileged to have the opportunity to serve our community. And Gene's done outstanding job serving this community. And he's gonna do it for one more term. And he is now officially a certified county commissioner. And we just want to say thank you. Thank you for taking the time to take classes away from your family, too.
Thank you. And you can address me as Commissioner, but certified.
Certified. Certified Commissioner, Dr. Gene Wallace.
You are certified. I'll say that.
Thank y'all.
Give that to Will.
Put it somewhere in front of my truck.
That's right. Thank y'all. All right, thank y'all for allowing me to present those two guys some awards. It is, it is a lot of work. It's a lot of thankless job, but we do appreciate y'all's service. Next up, we have our community development public hearing items. So we'll take a motion to close this meeting and open up our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close this meeting and we open a public hearing.
Second. Second. All in favor, say aye. And now, we are now in a public hearing. And we'll go through each of the items and have an opportunity for the public speak if they wish to.
All right, so the first item that we have for you is a sketch plot approval for Marina Village Phase Two. This is a subdivision within the larger Waterways community. The application is being presented by Savannah Land Holdings LLC. They're being represented by their engineer, Hesse Gay Bell. For this Phase Two of Marina Village, they are proposing an additional 77 single-family lots. The subdivision also includes some open and common space areas on the, what is 62 acres for the site. We presented this to the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting in November. They did recommend approval. However, that carried forward with three conditions, which are really conditions, just to clarify the record. Prior to proceeding with the final plot for this development, those three conditions are to have 911 approve the final road names, to correct the total acreage that is being shown in the title block on the plot, and also to provide an updated master plan for the Waterways community. Whenever we approve additional phases, we do have a master plan that we have them update so that we can keep a tally of the total lots that are being approved out there. Other than that, the staff's recommendation and their recommendation is for approval. The exhibits that I have for you this evening are just showing the general location of where this Phase Two is located. You can see it located in proximity to the previously approved Phase One, which included 66 lots. From the master plan, it shows the location in proximity to the Marina Village and the Dry Stack Boat Storage Facility that's already located there. So this is immediately adjacent to that. And then also included in your packages are the actual plot that's being presented. It consists of four pages and it shows the more technical aspect of the lots that are being proposed here. So for this item, I am available for any questions that you might have. I also believe that there is an engineer here as well with the applicant.
Anybody have any questions on this board? If anybody's here that wishes to comment for or against this project? No one? Okay, thank you. All right.
Okay, so our second item is the second reading of an ordinance to amend the official zoning map for property located at 1913 Wildwood Church Road. This is parcel 01402302. Currently, the property consists of 10 acres that are zoned A5. The request here is to rezone 2.5 acres of that to the RR 2.5 Rural Residential Zoning District. We presented this to the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting in November and they recommended approval. This exhibit shows the location of this property on Wildwood Church Road. This will show the existing zoning as well as the zoning of the area surrounding it. It is predominantly A5, which is our agricultural district. And the plot exhibit that we have for you shows the front 2.5 acres that are being proposed with this rezoning. So the intent here is in order to be able to subdivide off that portion where the home site is located for the current property owner to remain. And then the rear portion of the tract to be A5, which can be joined with the adjacent property owner's property. They're seeking to purchase it and they want to combine it with their existing lot. And for this, we do have the property owner here this evening if there are any questions.
Okay, any questions from this board? Anybody wish to speak for or against this project? Yes, sir, if you'll come up to, sir, if you'll come up and state your name for the record. Thank you.
Yes, Larry Lane. We own the property that joins that and we missed the first hearing. We're sorry. We just wanted to know, are they planning on building back in there or it's being sold to the neighbors?
Okay.
You say the owner's here.
If you'd come up too, ma'am. Let's get his car. Is that all you have?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay. If you're, okay, if you'll come up, sir, thank you. If you'll state your name for our record, please.
My name is Mary Ann Chance. I own the property and my neighbors beside me that bought Mr. Kendrick's old place, they own 15 acres and they raise show goats. And they originally wanted all my land. I said, no. And so we agreed for the seven and a half acres. And most of it's in the flood zone. So they just want it for the, mainly for the show goats.
Okay.
And maybe the horses, too.
Okay.
So no, they're not gonna build.
Okay.
Any structures or do you know that?
I have, I have three stalls, like wing tool, but no, that, no.
Okay, all right, thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against? Okay. Next up, we have radiant conditional use permit for a log yard parcel 055 dash C or 6O.
So this is a conditional use permit for a 10-acre tract of land. The applicant here is Radiant LLC and they're being represented, represented by Coleman Company. The request here is to allow for a timber processing yard. This is located in the A5 zoning district. You can see the 10-acre portion of the larger tract of land that's gonna be located here on Belfast Keller Road, just south of that intersection with Highway 17. The existing zoning is A5 and it is surrounded by A5 zoning. From the conceptual plan that has been submitted as well as the project narrative that the applicant provided, we know that the site will be accessed from Belfast Keller Road. They are going to use a gated gravel drive in order to unload and load the timber or to access the site for the unloading and loading of timber. The main activity on the site will include weighing trucks, treating lumber, and loading, unloading containers. For development, there's only gonna be a small building that is being constructed for the scale operator. This will include limited parking as well as a bathroom facility. And they are proposing to operate Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., anticipating approximately 20 trucks utilizing the yard per day. So this is a conditional use. We presented it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They did recommend approval. And the only condition that they attached to that approval was a limitation on the daily average trips and limiting it to 20 round trips per day to accommodate their anticipated truck traffic. and limiting it to twenty round trips per day to accommodate their anticipated truck traffic.
Okay, anybody have any questions on our board? Anybody wish to comment for or against this project? If you'd just come up and state your name, please, for our record.
Good evening, Scott Allison of Coleman Company. I just wanted to clarify, it's not the Radiant Community Development Division, it's our Timber Operations Division, it's a log yard for that, silviculture activities that occur out of the property currently. You saw in the site plan, what we try to do is there's a two-hundred-foot buffer between the log yard and Belfast Keller. They don't want to be seen and people don't want to see it, per se. I just wanted to clarify that the containers that will be out there, there's at most ten to twelve. And it's a cyclical activity, it's dependent upon the port. This is for export operations and getting them to the port, getting them out to the different countries that they would get to.
Okay.
And I can answer any questions, gentlemen, for the public hearing.
Anybody have any questions for Scott?
Scott, what is, what's the log treatment, what is that?
Log treatment?
Yeah.
So they, depending on where they go, there's different things they'll have to do to it. So contained within the, you know, the portion of the yard that would have the containers, there could be some fumigation. You know, just that way when they're shipped out, you don't get, you know, pine beetles or anything like that spread out all over the shipping containers.
So it's not sawmill, they're just treating?
No, these are, these are, these are timbered and they're brought in already pre-cut. And then this activity is more of a stacking, storing, and then getting it ready for export.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else here who would speak for or against? Okay, all right, thanks, Scott. All right, next up, we got the High C L Timber Conference of Plan Amendment, North Bryan Future Land Use Map for Parcel Zero-three-five dash zero-zero-one.
All right, so this item, as well as item five, are associated, so I'll talk about them together. This is a two-part request for a comprehensive plan amendment, as well as a rezoning. So the first part of the request for the comprehensive plan amendment is to amend the North Bryan County Character Areas and Future Land Use Map by changing the classification of property that is currently classified as low-density agricultural to industrial. Now, the second part of the request is for the rezoning, and this is to rezone the property from the official zoning map, which is currently reflected as an A-five agricultural zoning district, to an I-two general industrial zoning district. Both of these requests were presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting in November, where they did recommend approval of both the comprehensive plan amendment, as well as the rezoning. Now, specific to the rezoning application, it did carry forward with two conditions. These are standard conditions that we are seeing with these type of industrial developments. And that includes their requirement to enter into a water and sewer agreement with the county, as well as a transportation agreement. Now, the property in question is located off of Old Kyler Road. It sits in between the Interstate Center Industrial Park and the O'Geech River. It sits just north of where the new interchange will be located in conjunction with the Hyundai Megasite development. In total, the acreage that we're looking at here is one-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-four acres, which is going to be proposed for development. The existing zoning map will show that A-five zoning, but you can see it in proximity to the existing industrial zoning that has already, has taken place and is currently under development. Now, for the concept plan that has been submitted, you can see approximately five-hundred acres out of the larger one-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-four acres are being proposed for actual development. The rest are showing as being preserved due to the proximity to the O'Geech River, as well as some wetland conditions which would limit its ability to be developed. From the concept plan, they are proposing six buildings totaling approximately three-point-nine million square feet of space. Now, access to this would be off of Old Kyler Road, but this is where those transportation agreements are needed in order to determine cost sharing and improvements that would be needed in order to be able to access that portion of it. With that, I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions on our board?
Is there any potential for future development in those larger areas that are shown now as a preserved area?
So I think that the limitations there for those areas in the green really have to do with the topography and existing wetlands. I do think it slopes rather steeply going down to the O'Geech River, which I think would provide a lot of constraints if they were to try to develop it. But I do also believe that the engineer for the applicant may be here with us this evening and I would like to deflect that question to them.
Okay.
Anybody else? Any comments? Anybody here wish to speak for or against the project? You state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Jason Chambles with Thomas &amp; Hutton, we're the engineers for the site. Couple of things I want to mention. One is about the question for the reserved area. We're still, there's obviously areas that are wetland that we're not going to get into between the site and the river. There is one small upland area, kind of immediately adjacent to development area that we're analyzing for feasibility because of flood constraints and elevation, things like that. So the plan may change slightly, but we're still working through that and we'll discuss that with the county when the time comes. Couple of other things, we have been meeting with the county already to discuss the transportation, as everyone is aware. And as Amanda mentioned, the interchange for Hyundai is right there nearby, which will access Old Kyler Road. There's a portion of Old Kyler that'll be built as part of that and then a portion that will need to be built. So we're working with the county to try to get those conversations started. Water and sewer as well, we're working on the regional water and sewer, planning for that. And both High C L and Greenland, who are the developers, have been involved in that. We actually got the jurisdiction determination yesterday for the wetlands, so we're working closely with the county to try to get all the questions answered.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay. All right, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, hearing none, okay. Next is the High C L Timber, incoming second reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map for eleven-hundred-and-forty-four acres, parcel zero-three-five zero-zero-ones.
Yeah, so this is just the second part of the request that we just reviewed.
Okay. All right. Next up is our second reading of an ordinance to amend Article Four Development Procedures Required, Administrative Review, Division One Minor Plats of the UDO, Division Three Other Community Development Director Actions, Division Five Landscaping, Tree Preservation, Buffering and Screening of the UDO.
Thank you. The ordinance in front of you tonight is for second reading, so I will need a motion on this. This is to address the requests by the Board of Commissioners to look at a couple of sections of the UDO, specifically buffers and the minor subdivision process. So we've been working on this with the consultant for probably about six months now. And these are the recommended changes to address the board's request. So we would be amending Article Four Minor Plats, Article Four, Division Three Other Community Development Director Actions, and then Article Six, Division Five, the landscaping section. The Planning Commission did recommend approval at their November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting, and we are recommending that you adopt the ordinance with these amendments. So briefly to go over the amendments, the first one is for the minor subdivision. There was a request by the board to allow more flexibility on the minor subdivision process, specifically to allow larger lot subdivisions without a significant road improvement. So we've added a third tier for the minor subdivision that allows up to ten lots with an average lot size of five acres to be created if this is being created off an existing public road or newer existing private road that is built to the county's standards. We also revised the limitation on the minor subdivisions to tie it to the minimum, the maximum number of lots instead of timing. This is to prevent serial lot splitting, to circumvent our rules for road and infrastructure improvements. So instead of having it tied to the five-year period, it's just to the maximum number of lots that you can create. We added the requirement that the applicant provide a title report, especially if they're proposing a private road. We clarified the right-of-way area may be used for purposes of calculating density, but not for the minimum lot size. And then we added a requirement that the deeds reference the private, that there's a private road ownership and maintenance agreement to let all the buyers be on notice that the county's not maintaining the road that's providing access. The next set of amendments dealt with the buffers. We presented, I believe it was five options to you for buffer amendments. No one alternative was acceptable, but you liked portions of each one. So we took all of those comments and the consultant basically took those five alternatives and did the amendments based on what you had selected. So first amendment was to eliminate the option for the Board of Commissioners to reduce the arterial and collector road buffers by twenty-five percent and replaced it with a street yard. This is similar to what we allow in the commercial zoning districts, this would apply to the industrial. The commercial zoning districts can reduce a buffer in half from fifty to twenty-five feet if they do a street yard. And we're giving that option to the industrial development as well. We converted the street yard planning requirements from text into a table to make it easier to read. We added residential land uses to the minimum buffer width between zoning districts. So this means that if you have a residential use, but it is zoned something else, like commercial or industrial, that they get the benefit of the larger buffer based on the use. We increased the buffer width between... I wonder why we went backwards. We increased the minimum buffer width for the multifamily. We created three types of buffers for the industrial zoning districts. That way, the developers have options to pick the buffer that maybe works better with their, for their development, but yet still keeps the screening that the board is looking for. We increased the number of small trees and shrubs that have to be planted in the buffer. We added planning requirements for the seventy-five-foot buffer. We added a requirement for a performance and maintenance guarantee for all landscaping. And we expanded the specifications for the shrubs so that they met the minimum spread and container size. And lastly, on administrative relief, on the arterial and collector road buffer standards, we added the ability for the Community Development Director to reduce that in the industrial zoning districts if they're large development projects, specifically that they're a huge economic generator for the county. We have been requested by the industrial developers to have that as an option. In response to that, doing that, however, we are recommending that we remove the authority for the Community Development Director to modify buffers across the board in the I-two zoning district. And with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions? No questions? Thank you. Anybody in the public wish to comment on that? Nope? Okay. Thank you. Okay, what we'll do now, we'll close this public hearing and open our meeting back up and go through and vote on these items. So we need a motion to close the public hearing and open our scheduled meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and rezon the regular map. Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, all right. First up, the, that we'll vote on tonight is Savannah Land Holdings LLC sketch plat, preliminary plat, Phase Two of Waterways Marina Village, parcel zero-seven-five dash zero-zero-one. Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Waterways Marina Village Phase Two preliminary plat with the following conditions. Number one, nine-one-one approve all road names. Number two, correct the total acreage in the title block to sixty-two-point-ninety-one acres on page twenty-four, page two through four of the plat. And number three, provide an updated master plan.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? None? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right, next up is the Mary Ann Chance, second reading of the ordinance to amend the zoning map for two-point-five acres, parcel zero-one-four dash zero-two-three dash zero-two.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning for parcel zero-one-four dash zero-two-three dash zero-two, with the condition that the plat be approved and recorded for the proposed subdivision.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right, next up is the Radiant LLC Conditional Use Permit for a log yard, parcel zero-five-five dash zero-six-zero.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the conditional use for parcel oh-five-five dash oh-six-zero, with the condition that trips cannot exceed a daily average of twenty round trips per day.
A second.
Second? Okay, Commissioner Covin, all right, any discussion? Are they going to be responsible for cleaning that road as trucks pull out there? Will they have a sweeper out there sweeping that road?
They'll monitor it.
I would like to see it, because you know, those trucks coming out, they're putting dirt and mud on the road if it's raining. Okay, if you'll just make sure of that. Thank you. Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right, next is the High C L Timber and Company Comprehensive Plan Amendment, North Bryan Future Land Use Map for Parcel Zero-three-five dash zero-zero-one.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for Parcel number zero-three-five dash zero-zero-one, located on Old Kyler Road from low-density agricultural to industrial.
Second.
Second? Okay, any discussion on that? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right, the next one we vote on is the High C L Timber, that second reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map for eleven-hundred-and-forty-four acres, parcel zero-three-five dash zero-zero-one. We'll vote on those separately, so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and rezoning with the following conditions. The developer shall enter into a water and sewer agreement with the county, and the developer shall enter into a transportation agreement with the county.
Second.
Second? Okay, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Carries, all right. Down to item number six, the second reading of the ordinance to amend Article Four Development Procedures Required, Administrative Review, Division One Minor Plats of the UDO, Division Three Other Community Development Director Actions, and Division Five Landscaping, Tree Preservation, Buffering and Screening of the UDO.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the ordinance amending Articles Four and Six of the UFI Development Ordinances as presented.
Second.
Second? Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. All right, now we're down to our community develop, our non-public hearing items. First up is First City Associates LLP, first reading of the ordinance to amend the zoning map for four-point-zero-two acres, parcel zero-three-four dash zero-one-four dash zero-two, and zero-three-four dash zero-one-four dash zero-three.
So this is just the first reading of the ordinance to amend the zoning map. Existing zoning of this property is PD, which is our planned development district. They are requesting a rezoning to our CI interchange commercial zoning district. We are going to be presenting this to our Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting on December twentieth, and then we will be forwarding their recommendation to you at a public hearing and for a second reading at your meeting in January. For this particular tract, what we're looking at is that four acres that sits at the corner of Highway eighty and Highway two-eighty. There is an existing Parker's Kitchen convenience store located at this corner. And they are just seeking to rezone to a more conventional zoning district to make clear future guidelines for any improvements or enhancements that they might wish to make to the site. At this time, they have no plans to expand that facility or to add anything additional to it. You can see here the existing PD zoning district, so it does encompass this area, as well as the one-hundred-and-four acres that's behind it. This was all previously approved under a PUD back in two thousand and seven. It included the commercial component, which is where the Parkers developed and located. But there was also a housing component that was more located towards the larger tract behind it. And of the developments that was proposed in that PUD, only the Parkers and that commercial development ever came to fruition with it. So again, their request to rezon to the CI interchange district would just remove any prior PUD requirements from them and allow them to proceed under a more conventional zoning there. They did provide a concept plan, which really just shows the existing conditions of the site, because again, they are not proposing any new development at this time. Any questions on this item?
Anybody have any questions? Nope? All right, thank you. Next up is Brian, Blitston Bryan Oaks LLC, first reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map for one-hundred-and-four-point-five-nine acres, parcel zero-three-four dash zero-one-four.
So this is the other portion of that PD district that we just saw. This area encompasses approximately one-hundred-and-four-point-five-nine acres. This is being requested to be rezoned to the I-two general industrial zoning district out of that PD planned development district. The public hearing for this is being set with our Planning and Zoning Commission for December twentieth, and then we would expect to forward their recommendation to you for second reading and public hearing in January. So this shows the tract of land, again, it sits... So this shows the, the tract of land, again, it sits behind that existing Parker's Kitchen location there at Highway 280 and Highway 80. This shows the existing PD district, and this is the proposed conceptual plan that they are moving forward with under the I-2 zoning that they are requesting. So it does show an additional four industrial warehousing spaces on this tract.
Anybody have any questions? Have they addressed the setback issues in there to make sure that the?
They did. We took another look at that. They were shown adequate spacing already on their concept plan, but we did have them just clarify the set of size that would be required if this development were to move forward. So the, the setback to the truck courts is adequate to support future right-of-way widening, utility easements, as well as the 50-foot buffer.
So widening all, okay.
Yeah.
That's good. Okay.
Amanda, the, so the Parker's rezoning and this rezoning, they're both in the same PUD. They are independent of each other. One could happen without the other.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we interpret it that way, that one could happen without the other. Yeah.
Anybody have any questions? Nope. All right. Next up is our Robert and Gwendolyn Connolly, first reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map for 1.5 acre, acres, parcels zero through zero, dash, zero, two, one, dash, zero, one.
So this request is to rezone just a portion of a tract of land to the RR 1.5 zoning district, the purpose of which is for them to be able to subdivide the property so that they can place an additional manufactured home on the, the rear portion for a family member. We're going to, again, present this to Planning and Zoning Commission December 20th, and it will be back to you at your meeting in January. This shows the tract of land, that's the subject of this application. You can see it's very long and narrow. Current zoning of the tract is A5, and the submitted sketch plat shows the front portion that's proposed for the rezoning in order to split it off from the remaining tract to create that subdivision for the additional home placement.
Anybody have any questions? No questions, all right. Next up is the first reading, Kevin Smith, first reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map for 3.5 acres, 070-005-01.
Yeah, so this property is currently zoned RR1 and is limited to the zoning restrictions of the RR1 zoning, and the applicant is requesting to rezone to RR2.5 to accommodate the three-and-a-half acre property that they have in order to afford them the, the benefits of the RR2.5 zoning, particularly as it relates to the number of accessory structures that they would be permitted to have. We're presenting this to Planning and Zoning Commission this month in December. Back to you for second reading and public hearing in January. This shows the tract of land at the end of Kilkenny Road. Existing zoning in the area is RR1 as well as some A5 zoning, and this just shows the existing property as well as the, the conditions with the existing accessory structures, as well as a home that's currently being constructed. Included in this, we also have some pictures of some of the existing accessory structures that are located on the site. Again, due to the number of structures, it's already not compliant with the RR1 zoning, but the RR2.5 zoning gives them a little bit more flexibility in those type of structures.
Okay, anybody have any questions on that? Okay. All right, next up is the adoption of a bicycle and pedestrian plan, and we will be voting on this.
That's right. We're excited to present this to you this evening. So this was an effort that we started with last year with GMC as the county's consultant to help develop this bike and pedestrian plan. This represents the first phase of that plan. We're calling this the vision plan, and the primary purpose of this plan was really just to set the overall vision for a more comprehensive network of trails and paths in the county, both the north end and the south end. And then under the Phase Two, we would look at a design plan where we can start focusing on the prioritization of these to include short, medium, and long-range timelines for how this could be built out. So just a little background on how we developed this, we started with GMC by looking at the existing network of sidewalks and trails that were already in place throughout the county, supplemented it with a review of some previously adopted plans that identified some goals or other planned elements that had already been contemplated to help create this vision, and then engaged with the public to fill in any gaps that we were seeing and complete our vision for the network. Through that public involvement, we did an online survey where we got 600 responses and held two public workshops, one in the north and one in the south. So in the final vision plan that you'll see, what we've identified here or included in the plan is an explanation of the purpose and goals. We did include a summary of the public outreach activities that we conducted with this, where you're going to find a project listing identifying the 24 projects that we've identified through this process, and then also detailed project summary sheets that are going to provide more details for each of the 24. So here's the, the project list that's included in that plan, as well as just a glimpse of what those summary detail sheets will look like. Any questions on that?
Anybody have any questions for her? Okay. We'll need a motion to adopt this, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the Bryan County Bicycle and Pedestrian Vision Plan.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Thank you for working on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right, next up, we have the Adoption Resolution for Procedural Requirements for Zoning Procedures Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item before you is basically mandated by a change in the state zoning procedures law that was passed by the state legislature in July of this year. It is a very technical requirement. It has to deal with the appellate process for appeals from a county or municipality into either Superior Court or to appellate court. There are two issues that the, the state law mandates that we address either by resolution or ordinance. One of the requirements is to, to designate the person who will sign the certificate that is needed for an appeal, basically saying the person has paid all the applicable fees of the local government. The second requirement is to designate the person who can accept service of process for any appeal that may be filed against the county. In the resolution before you, we are appointing the county administrator to perform both functions, but there is also provision that he may designate someone to perform these acts if he is out of the office for an extended period of the time. So with that, I am here to answer any questions, but I will need a formal vote on this.
Anybody have any questions? Nope. Okay, we'll take a motion to approve that. Or deny?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve a resolution designating an officer to approve or issue a form or certificate necessary to perfect petitions and accept service of process.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. That motion carries. Down to Ben, your portion here. First up. First up is our 2023 Bryan County Annual Budget Adoption.
Yeah, I have one's probably the biggest one.
The biggest one?
The ninth is the adoption of the 2023 Bryan County Annual Budget. Each year, the county is required by state law to adopt the budget. Staff has worked over the past several months, coordinated with all the department heads, the constitutional officers to help the budget that continues to allow us to accomplish the goals of the county and especially gives the resources for us to meet our needs that are associated with the growth. You'll notice this budget is just a smidgen over $261 million. $150 million of that, of course, is the ARPA funding related to the Hyundai site that will be received from the state during, or spent during that 2023 fiscal year. So our recommendation is to adopt the 2023 Bryan County Annual Budget and all fee schedules as presented in the 2023 budget book.
Okay, we'll take a motion to approve that budget.
I make a motion to adopt the 2023 Bryan County Annual Budget and all fee schedules as presented in the 2023 budget book.
A second.
Second. Any discussion? I want to say thank you, Ben, and your staff for putting this budget together. It was a lot of work. They did a great job on it. Any other comments? Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right, next up is our Southeast Corrections Probation Service Agreement.
Yeah, next up is item two, the Corrections Probation Services Agreement. Bryan County entered into an agreement with Southeast Corrections in January 2018 to provide probation services for Bryan County and the Superior Court, State Empressor Superior Court. As you recall, we had this in-house at one time. This agreement is due for the approval of the Commissioners' annual renewal, and unless earlier terminated, this agreement shall commence on January 1st, 2023 if approved, and will expire on December 31st, 2027. So our recommendation is authorize the chairman to execute the agreement for probation services between these two court systems and Southeast Corrections LLC for, for that period mentioned previously.
Okay, we need a motion on that.
I make a motion, authorize the chairman to execute the agreement for probation services between Southeast Corrections LLC and Bryan County State Court and Bryan County Superior Court for a period of January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2027.
Second.
Second. Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right, next is our Belfort Contracts.
Yeah, this is concerning tornado rebuilding. This, we'd like you to consider Belfort tornado rebuilding contracts. This is 13 separate contracts. Counties work daily with Belfort and ACC Insurance to mitigate the tornado damage and then restore operations and then begin rebuilding. These 13 contracts are being negotiated and agreed upon by the county, Belfort and ACCG Insurance. You have them in front of you. They include the buildings of the county admin building, which you can see, and also various recreation facilities in Hendricks Park as well. So our recommendation is approve staff to sign these contracts with a total of just a little more than $5.1 million and allow Belfort to begin rebuilding the listed facilities in the contract.
Okay, we need a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to allow staff to sign these contracts to a million five point one million and allow Belfort to begin rebuilding Bryan County's facilities.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Next up is the JDA Board Appointment of Anna Chafin.
Item four is the appointment to the Savannah Harbor Interstate 16 Corridor Joint Development Authority, or for short, JDA Board. Mrs. Anna Chafin currently serves on the Savannah Harbor Interstate JDA Board. This will, this term will expire December 31st of this year, and Ms. Chafin has expressed her interest in continuing to serve on the board for another four-year term.
Okay, we need a motion to approve that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the appointment of Anna Chafin to Savannah Harbor Interstate 16 Corridor Joint Development Authority, JDA Board, with a term of January 1, 2023 until December 31st, 2026.
A second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. Next up is the award the contract for the South Bryan Sewer Diversion Construction Project.
Yeah, this is the water and sewer portion of the meeting, the next few items. So first up, item five is South Bryan, Southern Bryan County Sewer Flow Diversion to City of Richmond Hill Construction Contract. As you recall, this is a, this is a project where a number of, number of properties will be sewered actually by the City of Richmond Hill, and this project builds the line that allows that to happen. So bids were received for the project on November 29th of this year and evaluated by TNH. As a result, TNH has prepared a recommendation. The recommendation is consider the approval of the award of the South Bryan Sewer Flow Diversion to Richmond Hill to Tyson Utilities Incorporated in the amount of $3,136,796.17 and authorize staff to execute the necessary contract documents in order to initiate the project. So we're excited to get this one underway.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award a contract of the South Bryan County Sewer Flow Diversion to Richmond Hill to Tyson Utilities Inc. in the amount of $3,136,796.17 and authorize staff to execute the necessary documents to initiate the project.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right, next up is the authorized Thomason Task Order Number 79 for Water Reclamation Facility Headwork Construction Project.
Next up is item six, which is the Bryan County Megasite 2 Million Gallon Elevated Storage Tank and 1,800 gallon per day well. In conjunction with the State of Georgia and Savannah Harbor Interstate 16 Authority, Bryan County is committed to design, permit, and construct and on-site water and sewer improvements to serve Hyundai at the Megasite. Bryan County engaged Thomason Hutton to design and permit the Bryan County Megasite 2 Million Gallon Elevated Storage Tank and the well that's associated with that. TNH received the bids on November 30th of this year, and they were evaluated. Two bids were received and evaluated. TNH has a recommendation along with our staff, and our recommendation is consider the approval and award of this project to Landmark Structures LLP in the amount of $13,236,000 and authorize staff to execute the necessary contract documents in order to initiate the project.
Okay, we need a...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve an award of the VCMS 2 Million Gallon Elevated Storage Tank and 1,800 GMP well to Landmark Structures ILP in the amount of $13,236,000 and authorize staff to execute the necessary contract documents in order to initiate the project.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Next up is item number seven. It's the, I think this item is, let's see, it's the water, North Bryan Water Reclamation Facility Headworks and EQ Tank Engineering Services Contract.
Yes, in conjunction with the State of Georgia, and the JDA Bryan County is committed to designing, of course permitting, and constructing on-site water and sewer improvements to serve Hyundai at the Megasite. The proposed task order includes the design, permitting, bidding, and construction services for a new headworks facility and flow equalization tank as part of the new water reclamation facility in, in the northern section of the county. Thomason Hutton has provided engineering services for the other projects as well. Our recommendation is approve the attached scope of services and authorize the chairman to execute the corresponding task order number 79, amount of $989,500 for the services previously discussed.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Thomason Hutton Scope of Services and authorize the chairman to execute corresponding task order number 79 in the amount of $989,500 for the North Bryan Water Reclamation Facility Headworks and EQ Tank.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right, now, number, item number eight is the authorized TNH Task Order Number 81 for North Bryan Regional Water System Construction Project.
In conjunction with the State of Georgia, Bryan County is also committed to designing, permitting, and constructing the on-site water and sewer improvements to serve Hyundai. The proposed task order includes planning, design, permitting, bidding, and construction phase services for the Bryan Regional Water Supply and Transmission Main. The projects include two new green zone groundwater wells, one meter station, and two new booster pump stations and a large diameter water transition, or transmission main. Our recommendation is approve the attached Thomason Hutton Scope of Services and authorize the chairman to execute the corresponding task order number 81 in the amount of $2,798,870 for the North Bryan Regional Water Supply and Transition. for the North Bryan Regional Water Supply and Transmission Transmission Main Engineering Services Contract.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Thomason Hutton Scope of Services and authorize the Chairman to execute corresponding task order number 81 in the amount of $2,798,870 for the North Bryan Regional Water Supply and Transmission Main Engineering Services Contract.
Second.
Second. Okay, we got a second. All right, any discussion on that? All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, okay, thank you, all right. Next up is authorized Thomason Hutton Task Order Number 84 for Water Reclamation Facility Affluent System Construction Project.
Also in conjunction with the State of Georgia, Bryan County is committed to design, permitting, and construction on-site water and sewer improvements to serve the Megasite. The proposed task order includes final design, permitting, and construction services for the Water Reclamation Facility and Fluent Force Main in North Bryan. Our recommendation is to approve the attached Thomason Hutton Scope of Services and authorize the Chairman to execute task order number 84 in the amount of $3,509,400 for the North Bryan WRF and affluent force main phase two design.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Thomason Hutton Scope of Services and authorize the Chairman to execute corresponding task order number 84 in the amount of $3,509,400 for the North Bryan Water Reclamation Facility and affluent force main phase two.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, okay, that motion carries. All right, we are down to item number 10, authorized Thomason Hutton Task Order Number 90 for the Hyundai Megasite Regional Water and Sewer Construction Project.
Item 10 is the I-16 Megasite Regional Water and Sewer Infrastructure Engineering Services Contract. This is the regional, Bryan County is committed to design and permit, construct, on-site water and sewer to serve Megasite and Hyundai. The regional infrastructure includes a new groundwater supply within Bullock County, a large diameter, diameter water transmission main, and initial on-site and wastewater improvements. This is a part of that. Our recommendation is to approve the attached Thomason Hutton Scope of Services and authorize the Chairman to execute corresponding task order number 90 in the amount of $1,687,580 for this project.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make, make a motion to approve the Thomason Hutton Scope of Services and authorize the Chairman to execute, execute the corresponding task order 90 in the amount of $1,687,580 for the I-16 Megasite Regional Water Sewer Infrastructure Engineering Services Contract.
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, okay, that motion carries. All right, we're down to item 11, which is added on, it's the adoption of the Memorandum of Understanding for Project KSG.
Well, yeah, background on this, the company is planning to create a new business in Bryan County at the Cubes Interstate Center, too. The company will hire over 390 new employees and invest approximately $121 million in the project. The company has proven product line and will provide economic development in the county. Our recommendation is to authorize the Chairman to execute the Memorandum of Understanding as presented.
Any motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion authorizing the Chairman to execute the Memorandum of Understanding as presented.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay, that motion carries. Thank you. We're down to our public comments section. If anybody in the public out in the audience would like to make a comment? No comments? Okay, any Commissioner would like to make a comment? Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. So, thank you. I was looking at my... If you'll just come up, please, ma'am, and just state your name up here, and we'll give you five minutes to talk about whatever you want to.
My name is Ella Moore, and I'm from, I'm from Northern Bryan County, Ellobell community area. And, and my concerns is the Mill Creek Church Road. And 24 years ago, before my dad passed, we were in the process of trying to get the road paved. We have residents throughout that area and two churches where we attend church regularly. And we want to know where are we at in getting the road paved? Because it's been 24 years, and we haven't gotten any kind of feedback for where we stand at on the map with getting that job accomplished.
Okay. Like, I tell you, we haven't paved a road in about, man, how long, 24, 25 years? I don't think, a dirt road changing? It's been a while, but we do have a comprehensive plan in place. Now, I don't know where that road's at. We are looking at a comprehensive plan for that. If you, Ben, you want to?
Well, we have, we have paved the road.
Oh, C-SK, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is the road we, did we already approve this road? Yeah, we done approved this road to be paved.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's out of engineering. Where, I was looking for, Glenn's not here tonight, right?
Uh, there's a Glenn, Glenn's not, but yes, we did approve, the commission did approve that, that road to be repaved or repaved. And we're looking with county staff to look at easements and lineups, you know, challenge to make sure that road's the word, sort of process of that, but is set to be paved.
And when you establish an easement, is there a requirement that's what can actually go to the?
We've, there's a new property.
There's a new property along the route. Acquire the right way necessary.
And see, we have been through that already, 24 years ago. And we have just paid a well, I knew we paid more roads because the Hendricks Park Road was paved, and you don't have nobody on that road till you get to the other end. So we know that we have paved roads, and we have just been ignored. That's how we feel.
Well, ma'am, you, you heard him today, that's our engineer back there?
Yes, sir.
They're, they're doing the engineering on that, so it, it should be paved. Don't, create a timeline on that, you think? I mean?
Um, hard to say, kind of depends on acquisition property. So we, we are, I think this week, we have a preliminary sketch of the, the road alignment and what easements and rights and what we need to make sure we can get there, build that. So then we'll take that in actual designs, we probably have a few months of, of that and some survey, and then really it's a matter of, of right acquisition, if we're going to do it like, uh, to establish whether we need to do the property or not, and see if that's good or bad. We need to make room again, make sure we make room to build the, the road and grave on inside that road. So that's really going to control timeline, I think you gave an estimate, because that's the process of how long it takes for it to, rights and weight, how to get a good property. I will say probably the best thing that you perhaps do, don't beat that up, is, is talk to your neighbors about how important the road, why it being and paving is, and if, you know, convince them to help.
Yes, right, the doctor say everybody on the road got a flag, or meeting coming up and getting there, but it was paid.
Is that possession going to be really short or really long? We definitely don't want to do this.
And I'll come with all the updates on the county side, and y'all have a meeting coming up.
Yes.
The board?
In the cemetery, they have to move.
And we encourage the county commissioners to come as well. All of y'all, remember.
Miss Moore? Miss Moore?
That's provide the type of zone there that might be problems.
We do want to point out, just in case you didn't hear that part, but there's, there's, there's two cemeteries, which you know, on either side of the road, which could cause some problems, and that may be some areas that we really need a lot of help in, a lot of help in to overcome some obstacles there. But one thing I'd like to point out to you is, and, and you and I know each other, but Commissioner Price has been working really hard, and he's been working this commission, this commission over, very hard to get that road paved. So I just wanted to tell you that, that it's come a lot, come a lot further in the last year and a half than it's ever come.
I understand, 24 years.
I suggested that Commissioner Price take a grill and have a get-together, meet with those citizens.
We already gonna have a meeting.
There you go, there you go.
January?
And to address your issue for us, the, the cemeteries, I would go ahead and let you know, it's almost not going to happen for us to move those graves.
Yes, ma'am.
That's almost, it's just one of those things that, them graves been there for 50 years, some of them are near that. So, you know, we can think about what other alternatives we can do, but, you know, but the grave's going to be a hard thing to try to do, especially if it's coming out of individuals' pockets.
Well, we'll, we'll see, we'll see what the, the engineering comes up with, but it, and it may be that, it may be that some narrowing of driveways and stuff, but either way, it's going to be an uncomfortable situation for everybody involved.
Right.
Those asking and those performing and the families, and just want to make sure we point that out.
The good thing is, we are working on it.
Yes, sir, we appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, one other thing, that's kind of piggybacked what Noah mentioned, so Commissioner Price, just so you can know, every pre-commission, commission gave probably the last four or five months, Commissioner Price is passionate about the status of the road and where we are, and he is pushing very hard for that, in the category of really the best mark of the year, that year, on how we're going to pave the road, like, and prioritize the roads and make sure we take everything that's not, not priority.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Any, any other comments from the public? Nope, any comments from the Commissioners? Will?
I'd just like to say thanks to Andrew for stepping up and volunteering to do this. He's done a great job. Patrick, you got some big shoes to fill, and thank you very much.
No, and I, I just want to say thank you all for the opportunity to serve. It's, it's been a fun, about 18 months now. I feel like I was just getting to learn, finding my way, and feeling like I, I can give, have something to offer, and my time's up, so. But I appreciate the opportunity to serve, and I'm here wherever, wherever else you might need from me.
All right, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew, you did a great job.
I just wanted to say, I want to tell Andrew thank you, too, and appreciate all that you've done. Wanted, you know, we're winding up the end of the year here, and I just want to tell staff and everybody how much we appreciate you and, and all the work that you've done, and please pass it on to all of our team members. I think it's really important that, that, that what we do and we show appreciation for what you do, and we really do appreciate you very much, and with that, I want to wish you a Merry Christmas.
Second.
Thank you.
All right.
Absolutely.
Any other comments? All right, we will take a motion to go into executive session for litigation.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to go to executive session.
Second.
All right, we will be back.
You still working? I thought you quit.
You still working? I thought you quit.
Oh, hey, we need to ma- we need to have a motion to close this meeting, please.
Andrew.
Andrew.
That's Andrew.
Check, 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 check.
And, you know, you can't- you can come up here and scream all you want to.
Aye.
Don't speak it out loud, or they'll make traces, sir.
(singing)
I'm going to sing into the microphone.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meetings adjourned, thank you again, Andrew.